...the meeting of the Minnehaha County Planning and Zoning. And as a courtesy, make sure that all the cellphones are turned off. And also note that the Planning Commission meeting will be rebroadcast via CityLink and posted on www.minhahacounty.org for viewing by the general public. Any final action taken on the conditional use permit applications tonight will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the Planning Commission's decision is filed in the Planning Office by Tuesday, May 29 at 5:00 p.m. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the County Commission for a hearing on either Tuesday, June 19 at or after 9:00 a.m. The affected parties will be notified of the meeting date, and meetings of the County Commissioner are also held in this same room. At this time, the Planning Commission will consider the consent agenda, and items on the consent agenda are perceived to be non-controversial and meet all the requirements of the codes and regulations. The consent agenda will be acted on, and when motioned with no public hearing on the items, unless a member of the public, the Commissioner's staff requests the items be removed from the consent agenda. The minutes for the meeting of April 23 are included in the consent agenda. Are there any objections from the Planning Commission members to any item listed on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I will read each, and if there are any objections from anyone in the audience, please raise your hand, and the item will be moved to the regular agenda, and that will allow you time to address the commission later in the meetings. Start with number two. It's a continual use permit, 18-252 amend, cup 13-35 to expand concrete precast outdoor storage yard on the properties legally described as Track 1 Carlson Edition and Track 1 Harz Edition. The petitioner is Paul Corn, property owner is Carl B. Carlson, and that is approximately 2.5 miles southeast of Hartford. Item number three is conditional use permit, 18-262 allow temporary retail sales of fireworks on the property legally described as Track 1 Safari Edition. Petitioner is Mike Denning, property owner is Sandy Sorum. That is approximately 2.5 miles north of Sioux Falls.
Is that objection?
I'd just thought, I'd like to voice my opinion.
Okay, we will take, we will remove item number three and move it to the regular agenda, and then you will have your chance, okay? Since those are the only two items, we will, we'll need to approve item number one and item number two.
Make a motion for item one and two.
I'll second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That means that item number two, you are free to go. Number three, Kevin?
Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. Item number three is conditional use permit to allow temporary retail sales of fireworks on a property located approximately at 25793 475th Avenue, or two and a half miles north of Sioux Falls, shown on the map here. This property is located also in further description, north of the Renner Corner Gas Station and north of the Safari Bar and Grill at that Renner Corner. The petitioner is requesting nine-day temporary sales of fireworks on the property, and that is allowed in C Commercial District and A1 Agricultural District, as this property is currently zoned, splitting those two districts. The petitioner is making this request as he has recently acquired the sales trailer that was formerly used by the Renner Lutheran Church, just south of the property. He, in asking staff about the conditional use permit, we have found out that that permit was in violation of a few conditions and that we're not able to fix at the site because of part of it was the setback. So he took it upon himself to find a new location, which is in this site, to use that trailer. Staff recognizes that, oh, the petitioner is going to use that semi-trailer to sell fireworks out of. The area has an existing driveway, an existing gravel parking lot. You can see in the site plan here that he has parking right there. He has his trailer set long ways north and south. He does have space for a porta potty to be set on the site, and he has access onto the As staff reviewed this permit, we'd like to say that many fireworks stands create common problems that should be considered, including signage and attention grabbing devices can be limited so that it do not become a nuisance. So, and that nighttime light may become problems as well, so if there's any temporary nighttime lights, that they should be shining away from any residential uses. And then, but still keep in mind that those sales are going to happen during a nine-day period during the summer. So I'll address some items a little bit more on the conditional use permit criteria that I'll go over. Number one, the criteria to consider, the effect upon the use and enjoyment of the property and other surrounding area for uses already permitted on the property values within the surrounding area. The proposed use will create a busy retail center for a limited time period, and it is located near an existing commercial district, which is just in the south here, but it also is located near some residential uses to the north and across the road. The fireworks sales can lead to the possibility of igniting fireworks, and that should be avoided or prohibited so that they avoid nuisances to the neighbors and complaints. Number two, the effect upon normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant properties for uses prominent in the area. This proposed firework stand is located on a vacant lot. It is using temporary shelter, which would be easy to then future-develop this current lot into a commercial property as it is currently zoned. Many residential parcels in the area are already developed, so it would be difficult to, for many other properties to start building houses nearby as there isn't many more available. So the property should have little to no effect on future development in the area. Number three, the utilities, access road, drainage, or other necessary facilities are provided. And staff visited the site. I'll move to a quick picture here. Staff noticed that the one driveway that comes in and out is very narrow, and then there's a steep drop-off on either side of this paved section of the driveway. Staff recommends that the driveway be widened as to allow two cars, one coming in and one coming out into the driveway. Minor corrections could be made using gravel or crushed asphalt or similar means to allow for that traffic flow. The neighbor that lives in the north did stop in the office today and expressed concerns about the driveway, as the current establishment has had patrons use his driveway to come into the property, and he would like to avoid that being further used. And number four, criteria number four, that off-street parking and loading requirements are met. The site plan doesn't indicate eight parking spaces, and it's likely large enough to accommodate more than that. That should be enough to accommodate the fireworks sales. Criteria number five, and that measures are taken to control offensive odors, fumes, dust, noise, and vibration in lighting, inclusive lighted signs, so that none of these will constitute a nuisance. As noted earlier, this may create a busy retail environment for a short period of time. Fireworks should not be allowed to be discharged on the site, and artificial light should be directed down. The same neighbor who is concerned about driveway has brought up concern about the lights of vehicles flashing into his house as they park. This can be mediated possibility with talking with the petitioner, we haven't had a chance to do that yet, for maybe changing the site plan around, maybe changing how traffic flow happens in the property to avoid lights shining in his property. And then, number six, the health, safety, and general welfare of the public in the comprehensive plan. This is an area that is conducive for commercial uses, and a temporary sale should fit within the intended plan for the area. Staff does recommend approval for conditional use permit 1826 with the following conditions. Number one, the property shall adhere to the submitted site plan. Number two, no outside storage shall be allowed at any time. Number three, the retail sales of fireworks must abide by all applicable South Dakota laws and regulations. Number four, the retail sales of fireworks may only be marketable for nine days per calendar year. Number five, all outdoor lights and use for the trailer to illuminate the parking area shall be directed away from the single-family dwellings. Number six, temporary signs for the business are allowed to be placed no earlier than June 13 and must be taken down by July 10. One temporary freestanding sign is allowed not to exceed 64 square feet and shall be placed on the subject's property. Number seven, any flags, pennants, and similar attention grabbing devices shall not be located in the right-of-way, shall not block the view of traffic entering or exiting the property, and shall only be placed during the regular nine-day selling period of June 27 through July 5. Number eight, no parking or stacking of vehicles shall be allowed in the right-of-way at any time. Number nine, the driveway access to the property must receive minimal improvements of level gravel shoulders to allow 24 feet of total driving width. Proper permits from the South Dakota DOT must be acquired if required. Number 10, the hours of operation for the public must not exceed 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m., midnight. Setup and tear-down activities outside of the nine days of sale must take place between 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. Number 11, no fireworks shall be stored in the site before June 10 or after July 31. Number 12, that the Planning and Zoning Department reserves the right to enter and inspect the fireworks stand at any time after proper notice to the owner to ensure that the property is in full compliance with the conditional use permit conditions of approval and of Minnehaha County zoning ordinance. I'll go through a few more of these pictures, start at the beginning. So this is the driveway looking into the parking lot. You'll see the sign just to the left here, this is the south where the Safari Bar patio is located.
The building on the right there, that's the edge of the shed there?
Yes, this building right here is the shed for the neighboring property owner to the north. And this is looking north from the parking lot. That's the neighboring, the nearest house to the north and his shed. Looking kind of towards the other residential development area across the street, couple angles for that. And again, the driveway, which is pretty narrow, could likely just be fixed with a little gravel filling in the shoulders of the driveway. Looking down the highway, you'll see that it's busy highway, and we have addressed in previous permits and rezonings that there's lots of people going by very fast, so we wanted to make sure there's plenty of room to pull in and out. And then this is looking south from the driveway. A little closer look at the shoulder of each side of the road, and that is it.
Go back two slides, please. One more. Okay, so what's the area between the pavement and the parking lot there? Is that gravel or?
Yeah, well, this is kind of a boulevard. There's a curb here so that people don't drive on it. Where this vehicle is parked right here, there is probably a two-foot tall wall preventing vehicles from traveling through that parking area.
But you can park on the north side of that and then walk to the bar and restaurant?
Yes.
Okay.
You go ahead one slide, Kevin, please. Now, is there a culvert under that driveway at all? I can't see it from this picture.
That's a good question. I'm not sure.
I was wondering if you put gravel in, if there's a culvert there, would the chance that the gravel could fall over and, you know, slow water down going through there? That's.
You're right.
I'm not sure that there is a culvert there. Maybe, you know?
Looks like it from this picture.
But the other side doesn't.
That side kind of looks like it, but the other side.
Looks like the, the neighbor says that there's a culvert there, so.
So if you had put gravel there, would that be adequate width then to meet the requirements for coming and going?
So I would estimate that this driveway here is probably 12 feet, maybe a little bit wider than that as it is, the paved portion, than this gravel right here. If you add that into it on both sides, oops, you probably are going to get really close if not meeting that 24-foot as it is.
I don't see the exit from that culvert there, but.
No, you don't see it there.
It's probably covered up, sorry to say, but that's probably what happened with the gravel.
But there was one slide where there was a drain. There was a drain cover on there.
Yeah.
I don't know which slide that was at.
Couple slides back.
So this would be, I'm standing on the driveway.
You're looking south there.
Yeah, looking south, and so there's runoff, looks like coming from the driveway or from the parking lot. It might just be running over.
There was, I thought there was a drain cover on one of them.
Yeah.
If one of those pictures you have.
Two or three slides back, I think.
This way?
Go back a couple.
Other way.
Right there.
Yeah, there's one right there, right in the middle.
That's looking north, so.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so there would be, yep.
Okay, any other questions for Kevin?
I do, you know, we've got the requirement about no gravel, like, exiting onto a paved road. If we're allowing them to make, use gravel to make that driveway wide enough, how does that, how does that fix with or mix with what we have usually required for pavement going onto a paved road?
Sure. Probably the last time that we allowed a gravel driveway onto this paved road would be the fireworks sales on 12th Street for, I think, yeah, it's 12th Street out by.
Last Chance?
Yeah, Last Chance. That is a gravel driveway as it is a temporary use entering that. I believe we required something like 40 feet of gravel driveway to enter into the property so that they didn't, a minimum, keep out the mud if not.
Speed limit there on West 12th was a lot less.
Yeah.
You can always revise, right? You can always change the condition and make it paved?
Our hard surface requirements would allow for a crushed asphalt that is sealed with a sealer too.
With chlorine or whatever it is, the chlor-
No, you put it like a tar sealer.
Okay. Okay, is the petitioner here? Will you please come forward, state your name and address?
Mike Denning with the Fireworks Store, 6605 West 52nd Street, Sioux Falls.
Any questions for the petitioner?
Mike, thanks for coming. What about security there? It's on the north side of the bar. Who's going to be watching at 12:30 in the morning?
It locks up at night. The church had had it on the south side of the Renner Corner there for 15 years, and what they did was they just locked it up at night. And as Kevin shared with you earlier, it wasn't in compliance, so that's why I'm moving it up to that lot, and to be in compliance with the recommendations and what you're doing. So to answer your question, Jeff, we would just lock it up like they had in the past with padlocks. There's two doors. On those trailers, the door locks, and then you put a padlock through it, so you, I mean, I suppose if you're the professional thief, you can get in anything, but it's pretty
Any other questions?
What was wrong with the south location that you guys used for 19 years or?
The church used it for 15 years, is my understanding, and it doesn't meet the requirement. You have to be back 50 feet from the road. And I think when we got on the site, it was maybe 10 or 15 where they placed it for the last 15 years. So that's why.
Did it have a better driveway? Was the driveway down there?
It's all cement, yeah, it's all paved there, yeah. It is.
I have a question. You're aware of number nine, which they're talking about enough driving width. I mean, I think that that is a big thing for me, it's a safety thing, you know, people coming in and out, and I don't know how many you have coming in and out. I know closer it gets, I'm sure it gets pretty busy, but you're all aware of what needs to be done there?
Fully aware of that, and I will comply with your recommendation. Whether it's loose gravel or mixed asphalt or whatever, we will do that. First off, I'm going to go back to talk to Mrs. Sorum, Sandy Sorum, who owns the property, share with her what the recommendations are to make sure she's okay with it, and then I will move ahead. Because if she doesn't want me to do that, then that's all for now. I want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Right.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience, opposition? Do you come forward, state your name and address, please?
Yeah, I definitely don't like it. But what I, what I'm concerned.
Could you please state your name and address?
I'm sorry, Jim Quinn. My address is 25789 475th Avenue, the first place north of the lot we're talking about. Number one, I put up with screaming tires for motorcycles, cars at 2:00 and after in the morning. I like to go to bed, my wife goes to work at 6:00 o'clock in the morning. We like to go to bed about 8:00 o'clock at night. We can't. There's just noise continually. There's cars coming in and out of that driveway there. Way, there's going to be accidents one after another, I can tell you that right now. All you that have done is been out there and observed what happens on a Sunday out there when they have 50 motorcycles and about 150 cars all around there, all different places. I see no reason to be having a firecracker stand open till midnight. I'll argue that one with you. I see no reason for, there's garbage all over the place. Even when they had the firecracker stand, on the other side, there was paper and material blown all over helter-skelter out there. It was just, and you can't get a police officer out there. I haven't seen a squad car go by my place. There's one goes by at about 10 minutes after 7:00 in the morning. That's the only one you see all day long. I don't know what the deal is, why we have to put up with all this. They come out of that bar, they're filthy drunk, they shoot right across the lot, jump over my berm right there, go out my driveway, squeal on their goddamn tires. It's just utterly ridiculous. And I don't think anybody would stand for this. I have seen them light firecrackers when they had your trailer house, had your trailer over there on the opposite side. I've seen them light firecrackers 10 feet from there, if even that. That's asking for one wild explosion. That's just my opinion. I'm not for it. I'm sorry. I hate to see progress, I hate to stop anything, but if it can be observed, but you're going, he's going to have to completely redo that in-and-out driveway. There's room for one vehicle. I've seen many of them start to come in, lock up their brakes, sit there, wait for the other one to get out. It's just not safe. I don't know what else to say. Gentlemen, if you've got a question for me, or ma'am, ask me, I'll be glad to tell you. But I just, I'm not comfortable with it.
Jeff?
So, Mr. Quinn, do they come in and park there going to the bar and then cut across all that grass and go out your driveway?
Yeah, they get all snoccered up, they shoot right across, they rev up their motors, fly across, boom, boom, out my driveway. Either way they go, motorcycle's the same damn thing.
Is, what could be done to make this a better project from your point of view? If there was a fence on the north side of that to keep traffic from going through or?
I tell you what I think, if he goes ahead and does it, if they do it, I'm going to line that whole side of my edge up there with trailers. I'm going to go rent some trailers and park them there to put a stop so they can't get across there.
Where's your lot line on this picture here? Can you show us?
Well, you see the block top of my driveway?
Yeah.
The lot light runs about four foot this side.
Okay, so the rest of that is the Sorums land then?
Right.
Okay.
I mean, I don't want to stop anybody from making a dollar. I understand the prophets are supposed to go to the church. I don't know if they are or not, but that's, I just, I don't want to see somebody get killed, I don't want to see somebody get hurt, I don't want to see an accident happen that's not supposed to. If there's something, an ounce of prevention has always been my philosophy in life. It's just not a good thing, but that's my opinion. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Petitioner, you want to come forward again, please?
I think we can resolve some of this. I would agree, Mr. Quinn, with your concerns. I want to get to bed too. I don't like it, even though I'm in the business to, I can't get to bed at 2:00 o'clock in the morning, I agree with that. As far as the property, we've done this before. We put up a fence, you know, we have fence drivers who put up a fence, the length of the land, so as long as it's a city ordinance, we can do that. I mean, or the county, I mean, I want to make sure I can do that, but we have the materials to do that already. We can put the fence up so people don't go that way, and we can run a fence this way so they just can't, you know, stop doing that. Now, after the fireworks stand's gone, they're going to continue to do that because I'm going to take my fence down. I mean, as far as, until midnight, you want me to stop at 10:00 o'clock? We stop at 10:00 o'clock?
I would really appreciate it.
I would do that for you, Mr. Quinn. Every day at 10:00 o'clock, we're done. You know, and.
I'll come over to check for you.
And as far as the garbage and all that, I will personally come and see you when we're done, and I will personally clean it up. If it doesn't meet your satisfied, satisfy you, I will stay there and do it until it's done right. I mean, even though we did make the mess of it from the bar or whatever, we're going to, we want to work with you because it's not a one-year deal. We want to be there every year, but we, I know I have to get along with the neighbors. And what I say has to be the truth, and that's what you'll find out. It will be the truth.
Mr. Denning, is there any chance you could send Mr. Quinn to the Wisconsin Dells for nine days in July? I'm teasing, sorry, but I do appreciate the idea on the hours, and I also like the fence idea, and.
And the people working there, you know the James family?
Yes, I know the James family.
They're, because of the James family, I don't know if you get along with them or not, but because of them is how this all came about, because they told me the church used to do it.
The sheriff is over at their house once or twice a week.
Yep. Oh, is it? Oh, okay. But anyways, that's kind of how I found out about this was available, so.
I just, I'm sorry, I apologize.
No, don't.
I'm not in favor of this thing. Like I said, I can't begrudge you a living, I can't. I'm sure we'll go to know-to-know if it don't fly right, but I.
If it doesn't fly right, Mr. Quinn, I won't be back there next year. You have my word. I'm not going to fight you. It's not worth that. I just, give me the opportunity to prove to you that I'm a man of my word and the people that work for me?
If not.
Then we won't be back. Well, you know, we're going to go till 10.
Unless somebody don't get hurt, that's my meaning.
Well, I don't want that either. I mean, I have to provide insurance for.
Because I've seen little kids out there playing around in that lot, and their mom and dad go to the bar. I've seen as high as 20 kids out there kicking a ball around, and yet somebody will come over and they'll drive through my corner, my driveway, and they'll flop down and drive over that way. All right, I just, it's not a good deal.
We appreciate you trying to work this out between you. I think that that's being good neighbors. Yeah, I mean, whether you're going to be there for a short period of time or he's still there, and that's what this is all about, and that's what we try to do too, if we can work it out.
Right.
So we appreciate it working at that, but I think between the two of you, I think if you can work out your differences, you can make this work, at least for the. you can make this work, at least for this year. Becky?
Yes, thank you.
There was a burn, a wooden, a wooden burn supposed to have been put up there, but it never got done. And I came down and the boys and I went to the paperwork and there was nothing, no paperwork about it. But originally there was supposed to be a burn along there.
Okay, we're gonna move on, Becky, you got a comment?
All I was gonna say was, it sounds like we maybe have two different issues here and the, there's a something historical that maybe the staff will need to look into related to some of your concerns, but I think as far as the permit itself, I think that reducing of the hours to ten PM, I'm a little concerned about the driveway and amount of, of loose gravel. I guess I would like to see, see that portion that butts right up against the highway have the crushed asphalt or something like we usually require. And I'm not sure staff, how far back that would need to be. But I would feel better, I think that helps with safety as well and not having loose gravel on the highway.
I'm, I'm fine with that, Becky.
Okay, commissioners, do you have any other comments?
So under condition nine talks about twenty-four feet of total driving width, so is that sufficient, is that our?
Oh, that's the driving width.
Width.
And then for a distance of whatever, and I think we'll just say, just, if you want a hard surface, then I think we'll just say in here, it needs to be hard surfaced, not gravel, twenty-four feet wide for a distance of thirty feet, I would, that's two car lengths basically.
I, I would also say, Mr. Demming, I think there needs to be a, uh, marker showing, a reflector showing where the edge of that driveway is cause if I'm buzzing down there at sixty miles an hour, which it's fifty-five I believe, but it's sixty-five all the way down from Dell Rapids and, uh, I don't think they break until Sixtieth Street North, but, uh, Kevin, do they? You, that's the way you come. Anyway, uh, so a couple of markers there, would that be all right? Well, I guess I'd like to suggest a couple of additional conditions then.
Go ahead.
Um, I'd like to, um, suggest that we change that to twelve AM to ten PM, that we add a thirteenth with a, uh, a fence and that, uh, uh, I don't know where hard surface needs to go on there, but, uh.
Number nine.
Number nine.
You want to say it for thirty feet, correct?
Yeah, and, uh, hard surface for thirty feet. And then, uh, I guess, I, I'm just saying this, cause I think about it, uh, some kind of reflector on the edge of, of where the driveway is so that people don't misjudge in, in the darkness and.
Maybe you can add that on to thirteen, you got a fence and add the reflectors. Would that be all right? I think that that's more of a safety thing, um, I, I don't disagree.
Honestly, I will be talking to the sheriff about, uh, keeping an eye on, on things. He's got a lot of places to keep an eye on in this, uh, county unfortunately and, uh, it doesn't slow down in the summertime, but I will talk to the sheriff about patrolling Renner Corner in general and, uh, keep an eye out for Kevin driving down to work too. So anyway, that's, was my motion then to, uh, add the hard surface thirty feet wide, ten PM fence and marker.
I'll second with the condition that, uh, Jeff has put forward.
Okay, I'll do some favor.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes.
Mr. Quinn?
No items on the regular gen- well, we pushed that one, um, old business?
I have an item for new business. So two items of new business, you, uh, received the email today from Paul Hossboom, he's resigning and it's, I, I did get his official, I got his official letter of resignation, so I'll open up the, um, position and it will be, it'll be a appointment to fill his un- filled position. I, I don't know what year he was supposed to, to be on the board, but it'll be the balance of his, of his appointment.
I think it's still twenty nineteen, I thought I looked, but whatever.
It'll be the balance of his appointment and then, um, the second item of new business, um, would be, in the past, uh, we have had a, um, a, um, planning commission summer activity and, um, uh, I know that there's been some interest expressed that we should have another summer activity, so any suggestions on where you would like to update or plan your soiree at?
The safari, maybe the safari.
How about we ride bikes down to Newton Hills?
Any, like I said, uh, if you have any suggestions?
The Hops Place isn't, isn't doing tasting yet, are they?
Uh, Anderson Care.
Yeah, Saturday's two to five or something. One to seven? Saturday's.
But there's no, no food there, would be. Has anybody been, have you?
I've been there, it's always been closed.
So, if you wanna do it at, at that Anderson Hops Place.
It's just kinda nice to go someplace.
Something different, yeah.
Where we have, they've come before us and we've made some kind of an approval of a.
Do you want us to check into it and see and then, or maybe, I don't know if, if they would allow us to have something catered in or if you'd want? Cause we've done that before too, where we have, um, uh, we could have like Chinese brought in and then, you know, the beer or whatever or you could do a potluck thing, or you could bring chicken, I mean, we could, we could do like a chicken thing and everyone, uh, it's.
That sounds fine, let's investigate and see what we could do. And you know, there, we have wineries and stuff that I've never been to, uh.
Yep, I agree.
Do you have that, I hope they have a tasting room or anything?
Where at?
Where's that?
That's on the way to Garrettson.
It's by, over by Garrettson.
Oh.
Highway eleven there?
That's closed whenever I drive by it.
They are Republicans too.
Uh, do you want us to pick one of those and?
Yes, ask it, it's no.
You know, we could go, uh, see a, a ballgame in Renner Corner too, we could go to see, uh.
We always talked about doing that, didn't we?
Go to the Monarch Lounge?
Yeah.
You think you could go to the Monarch and sit on their deck?
Sit on the deck that we approved, yeah.
We approved that deck.
Well, is that two years ago? Yeah. We've been out there before.
Check, check those things, bring some options.
Okay. Well, we'll already, we'll, we'll have the options for you in June and then we can do something in July or August. Cause I, I mean, the summer, just, we'll fly by.
I, I, Madam.
Go ahead.
They shouldn't be driving through his property.
That's really a bar issue, not me.
But no, I know that, so, I mean, what, is there anything that we have in our card?
It's the sheriff, I think it's gotta be the sheriff.
It's gotta be the sheriff, there's nothing with our conditional use permit there.
I think we could look, I don't know, we could take that to. It's not really an activity that's occurring on their property is the problem. I mean, it's.
I've had.
I think we could look into it, but.
You're right, you're right.
I've had people drive across my lawn before too.
I, we could look into it.
No good reason.
Well, we could look into it.
Really?
And, and you're right, Becky, it really was two issues, I mean, a, a lot of what I was hearing was frustration with the bar.
With the bar, yeah, not with the fireworks too.
And sometimes it's so hard, if you have a situation that is displeasing, it's really hard to separate those out.
It's kinda overflow parking there, I think.
Yeah.
You know, that side there.
I move adjournment.
Okay.
All right. Second.
Favor?
Aye.
We're done.